Good evening and thank you for joining us for our Tuesday, January 25th Board of Education meeting. Please join us in a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm going to turn the -- to Dr. Byrne to give the report of the superintendent.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our January 25th Board of Education meeting. If you haven't attended a board meeting recently, we are back to holding in-person meetings here in the middle school multipurpose room, but given we still must be mindful of state Department of Health requirements, we are also continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube Live. Last night, a Nassau County Supreme Court judge issued a decision that school districts are no longer authorized to require the wearing of masks. In accordance with the law, the Rye City School District notified the community early this morning that masks are now optional in district schools. This afternoon, an appellate judge heard an appeal filed by Governor Hochul to stay that decision and reinstate the indoor mask mandate requirement in schools. A short while ago, the judge granted the stay until such a time as the hearing is complete, which means that all students, faculty, and staff will again be required to wear face masks starting tomorrow. As a district, we will continue to obey all New York State laws and regulations and orders of the court. I apologize for the guidance whiplash that is being created by all of this constantly changing information, but this appears to be the world we're living in. As you may know, I have been aggressively advocating for a mask metric where in communities that are experiencing low spread could cease using masks in schools. I've written several letters to Governor Hochul and New York State DOH Commissioner Bassett to this effect. My most recent letter of January 13th outlines six key requests from school superintendents in the Lower Hudson Valley. The six requests include available weekly PCR testing in schools, the elimination of contact tracing in schools, the easing of restrictions and masking based on metrics, increased funding for mental health support for students, consistent guidance for schools across the state, and increased access to vaccinations and boosters. I'm pleased to share that these advocacy efforts are working. We've now increased access to PCR testing in schools. We have been receiving and distributing rapid antigen tests weekly. Contact tracing has been changed significantly, and while the current regulatory turmoil we are experiencing is challenging, I am optimistic that our advocacy efforts are having an impact. I'm happy to report that for the first time in a long time this past Friday and again today, we had positive COVID cases in the single digits. If this trend continues, we will most likely be changing our case reporting frequency from every night to every other night. We will, of course, announce any changes to the community in advance of making them. We distributed another 1,100 COVID tests to district parents on January 13th and 14th by a drive-by pickup at Central Office. These tests were given to us by the state to help protect the community. We are expecting to receive another allotment of 1,900 tests from the state this week, and we will hold another distribution event. On the Friday of Martin Luther King Weekend, we received word that schools are no longer required to conduct contact tracing. We must still notify parents of exposure and provide information on quarantines and isolation for impacted students via email, but this means our principals no longer must research and identify contacts of COVID-positive students and teachers and call them each individually. This should serve to free up a great deal of our principals' time and enable them to focus on being a school administrator rather than an extension of the Health Department. And finally, the district has completed a review of Rye High School's sports and extracurricular activities. As a reminder, the Race Inclusivity and Community Task Force asked the district to review these offerings to make sure that they are equally accessible to all students. The Rye High School administration worked with our athletic director to conduct the full review, and the results with recommendations for next steps have been shared with me, and I will in turn be sharing the report with the board. Additionally, we are awaiting the final data dashboard from the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, Lyric, as you may recall. We were awarded a chance to pilot this new dashboard back in November. We will be able to enter our student assessment data and demographic data into the dashboard, which will enable us to take a deep dive into our data in specific lots and also allow us to compare our data along with state data. I hope that we'll have access to the dashboard very soon. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Byrne. And just to reiterate, you know, the back and forth that we unfortunately have experienced today, you know, we're certainly hopeful that as things move forward, we'll get more clarity earlier so that people can be informed as early as possible of any changes that are made by the state and the Department of Health. And that continued advocacy to have metrics around how to move forward is ongoing and certainly very important. So next on our agenda is the first presentation and discussion, which is focused on the academy at Rye High School.
So I'm thrilled that we're going to be receiving this presentation this evening. We have students and faculty from Rye High School that will be here to talk about this idea of just a few years ago that has become much more of this little idea into a real actual thing that is having a tremendous impact on kids in our school. And if you recall, we talked a lot at this table about creating pathways for kids and creating opportunities to reach different kids in the different ways they learn, in the different ways they think, and providing lots of different opportunities in the high school and in our schools for them to be successful. And this little idea called the academy was one that started two years ago, and I'm thrilled to turn this over to Dr. Murray and the team from the academy and the high school to take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening. So yes, we are very excited to be presenting to you the academy at Rye High School this evening. It's in its second year and really has already started to grow and flourish. So we have a few people here to present to you this evening. We have Caitlin Cessona, Director of Technology, and Suzanne Short, our principal of the high school, and Bill Meyer, who's our instructional staff developer for grades six through 12, as well as Ashley Blanch, one of our teachers of the academy. So really, we hope that we are able to give you a sense of the vision and the mission, the type of work the students are engaging in, and really be able to hear their voices, the student voices, the teacher, and we also have some parents here as well to share their perspectives. So without further ado.
Thank you. So we're going to take you through the places we've come from and kind of where we're heading in the program, some things that we've learned along the way. And, you know, I think you guys are all familiar with the Rye commitment. But one of the things that we want to make sure we do is we do have Alex and Claire who are here, and we have two parents behind us who will kind of tell you their thinking and answer any questions that you have toward the end, because I know that sometimes there are a lot of parent questions that circle around it. One of the things that we really spent a lot of time doing, and Caitlin and I have been kind of together from the start with everything, was making sure that we really wanted something that we could use as an anchor for the program, that we would focus on at all of our meetings, we would talk about, we would live it, and it would tie to the Rye commitment, but also to some innovative learning that we wanted to have in the building. So this is the mission statement that we've been working with. We are revising it, but the concepts will not change. When you look at it, it really kind of breaks down into some things that we generally believe in the high school. You'll see things about learning, reflecting, growing, caring, things that you expect to see in all classes everywhere in Rye High School. If you dig a little deeper, it's a little bit different, and I want to highlight those parts that make it different than the rest of the high school. The first thing is co-creating. Co-creating, while we do it in some projects in some places in the high school, I would say it is not a daily norm in the high school. It is a daily norm in the academy. So the idea that together with students and faculty, it's a team of 10 faculty members, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, they work with the kids consistently to come up with agreed-upon plans, assignments, assessments, protocols, ways that we function as a group together. So the co-creation is definitely something that makes it a little bit different and sets it aside and is part of the vision and mission. We also focus on it being authentic, which in our case has a couple facets to it. Being interdisciplinary is something that's definitely different. We link math and science and English and social studies, and you guys will hear a little bit more about that later, but the idea of kind of putting things together into one place makes it a different experience. And the authentic piece, tying it to the community and engagement, students are doing real-life projects that make real-life changes, and I think you'll hear the parents and students talk about it a little bit, but it really is something that's not just something that happens in a classroom. It's how do you take the pieces of a classroom and make them part of your real life? What does that learning look like in the workplace, in your life, in social advocacy, and making change? And so those pieces set it aside from what we do on a normal basis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex Yeh. I'm one of the seniors in the academy. Both Claire and I are going to talk about kind of the points from the academy that we believe stood out to each of us individually. I'd like to start off with the individualized learning section. Individualized learning means that every student in the academy is pushed beyond what they believed they could do when they entered the academy. As an AP student myself, I've excelled way beyond what I thought was possible when it comes to presenting, like I'm doing now, or talking to members of the community or leading projects within our school.
Hi, I'm Claire Killian. I'm also one of the seniors in the academy. Talking about community partnerships is one of the things that sets the academy apart the most from the rest of the school programs. Without interacting with the community, we can't put our projects into action. I've had so much fun working with groups like Rye Sustainability, the Rye Historical Society, really local town-based groups, but we've also worked on the state level. I'm looking ahead to an internship with Senator Shelley Mayer, which I'm really excited about and was pushed to do sort of through the academy. So, you know, it's without these community partnerships that we don't get the same depth of learning.
As far as the inclusive classroom structure goes, the academy at Rye High School tries to incorporate people from, who have all different interests. So whether you're interested in music, film, or politics, everyone kind of comes together to learn from each other and in a way that is really unique and found nowhere else in the school, because in the academy, we try to leverage our -- sorry, leverage our strengths while also learning how to improve on our weaknesses.
That actually ties right into the interdisciplinary approach. So in the academy, everything is interdisciplinary. We kind of recognize that in the real world, there's not such clear-cut divisions between math, science, English, history. And so I think probably one of the better examples I can give is the projects that I'm currently working on. So in my humanities class, I'm doing a project on capping the Cross Bronx Expressway, which is essentially a movement to build a park over the Cross Bronx Expressway, which is kind of this vestige of structural racism. And then in my STEM class, I'm doing a lit review on how parks and urban spaces contribute to climate resiliency. I'm looking at a lot of research conducted by universities like Columbia, by private studies, and compiling that to use down the line in a further larger research project.
Claire's projects in STEM and the humanities really speak to the action-based research portion of the academy. Action is kind of pointless if you don't understand the reasons why you're doing the action. Vice versa, research does nothing if there's no action taken. In the academy, we try to merge the two concepts, really working in tandem to bring projects to the community that are based on both lived experience and also statistics and a firm understanding of the topic.
Yeah, to that point about lived experience, the academy focuses a lot on living and on people and on student wellness, social-emotional learning, and deep inquiry. A lot of what we do circles around kind of the individual human being. So on Mondays, we have circle time, which is part of an advisory where we all sit down together, and it acts as almost like a touch point for the week, where we all talk about where we're at sort of in our own lives, but also where we are academically. If someone's stressed, if someone doesn't know where to go with a project, if someone doesn't know where to go with a personal problem, we kind of hash that out. And then on Fridays, we have another advisory period, which are often teacher-led, and they're kind of fun educational moments where we get to explore things in a really creative collaborative environment, and that adds a depth that is unparalleled. I, you know, build these relationships with my fellow students and with my teachers that support me throughout the rest of the projects that we're doing, and you need the support with the work that we're doing in these programs.
So I'm going to talk you through quickly kind of the general composition of the programs and the course. It does meet all of the high school requirements and New York State requirements in grades 11 and 12. So we have five courses. They're broken up into 11th and 12th grade curriculum, which is different this year than it was last. As our program's grown, we broke them apart a little bit, so they still have advisory, which Claire was just talking about together, but the academic courses separate for 11th and 12th grade. So in 11th grade, you have what would traditionally be considered US History and English 11, and that does meet the state requirements, and they are eligible to take the regions at the end of the exam, which is a New York State requirement for graduation. They're co-taught together, so it's in an experience called the American Experiment, where you really look at how US history impacts what we do every day in literature and things that we talk about and things like that, and then they use it to go out and write, do their own writing in alignment with those visions of the ideas that span history. In 12th grade, we actually have three courses. Two of them combine English and social studies and meets those state requirements for econ and participation in government, and English 12, and they're broken apart into Power and Politics, which really is a focus on participation in government and public speaking together, which if you think about it, makes a lot of good sense. And then Econ and Ethics, which is the idea of the economy and the way that things are spent in combination with ethical questions and dilemmas, which is kind of an equivalent for our Intro to Philosophy class in the high school. But since they're student-led courses, the students choose their areas of focus. Every course is different with every semester and every group of students. So the seniors this year, even though they're taking the same courses in those two, are doing different projects. So the learning really is specialized to them, and there is no standard form of teaching, because it depends on what the students select as their point of interest. Our new course this year, which we're going to talk about, is Action Research. It was based on the feedback from the students in conjunction with feedback from teachers, and it's kind of where we landed in the middle. So when we asked students what was missing for you, one of the things was how do you actually take something that you totally want to explore with no structure and take everything you've learned from school K-12 and apply it? That's a big question. And so this is what we landed on. We worked with Diane Cunningham to kind of flesh through some of our ideas, and then Ashley and Sally met with me over the summer, and we wrote some curriculum to make sure that students really could explore what they wanted and things that they've never been able to look into, and apply some deep statistics, in my opinion, to the work that they're doing. And Ashley will talk about that in a little bit. I think that's it. Is there anything?
So as Suzanne was saying, meet the community. The academy is such an amazing place where we get to foster so many different relationships and members from Rye High School. So not only are we fortunate to work with eight amazing teachers, in addition to our team, we have Dr. Meyer, awesome staff developer, we have our social worker and guidance counselor, Sandy Daganhart, and Garrett Renner, the support of Dr. Murray. And together, as Suzanne said in the very beginning, when you look at the academy mission is we're co-creating. So it's not a program that it's a top-down. It's really looking at what are students passionate about, what do they need in the real world, and how can we as the academy community build a program that meets their needs and also the teachers? And so we're very fortunate to just be in each other's lives and in the classroom, working with the students, and it's just a wonderful experience.
We wanted to give you a sense of what the day looks like. It's kind of confusing to look at, but the color coding helps. Color coding always helps. It's a life trick. I do like it. This is just the morning section, so you see the juniors and seniors. We follow the traditional day of the high school this year. We follow the same rotating drop schedule as the high school. That was the feedback from the students, that it was confusing. So we stuck with that format and shifted. Last year, we did not use this. And we, again, co-creating, made some modifications this year. We just wanted to show you that they are co-taught classes, so each one holds two blocks. So if you look at 11th grade, on day one, you'll see two STEM and one humanities. If you look at day three, you'll see two humanities and one STEM. So they get equal instructional time. It's just the allocations of time per day shifts and rotates, but since they're co-taught, they take up two sections of the student's schedule. So students spend the morning with us in the academy and the afternoon in the traditional high school, taking whatever classes appeal to them. Because it's a small cohort of students with a finite special set of skills and interests, they do get to put in their course selection, so they get loaded into their languages, their art, their music, their...
Engineering.
Engineering, sorry. I almost missed it for Caitlin. Engineering. And for our students who do have AP interests, it helps them to be able to still take those classes in the afternoon if they want. The point is that in the afternoon, they can build out whatever program really interests them for the person they want to be and the well-roundedness that they're seeking.
So you've heard a lot about community on different levels, both with the students and the staff and the faculty, and I think what's unique about the academy is the intentionality behind the way in which community is created. And most research shows students need to feel connected, both to their peers as well as to their teachers, to really internalize and embody the learning that's taking place within the classroom. So if we look at the way community is created within the academy, I think about it in three ways. First, before we get to the advisory piece, like right from day one, there's the intentionality of community building. You can actually see a photo there. Both of those photos come from the first two weeks of the program, when students are given the opportunity to get to know one another as well as get to know themselves. And I think that was brought up because for this program to really not just succeed but thrive, it has to be an inclusive space where students from all over the school can feel welcome, supported, and have an individualized learning experience. The second piece is advisory, which was mentioned earlier, and this space, this weekly space for students to come together and engage in conversations with one another, to check in where they're at, to support each other. And we know so poignantly this past year how important that is with students, within this high school, within any high school truly, but especially in a school like this. And the last piece, I would say about the community building, and this was sort of touched on earlier, is this also plays out in the classroom. Like if you're going to engage in heated conversations with your peers, if you're going to challenge one another about the research or the stance you're taking, you have to know them, you have to respect them, you have to understand them. And I think that's pretty unique in what the academy foregrounds and the way this is created and the dividends are seen. I mean, you can see this both in what we shared earlier, which was incredibly impressive, but also if you were to walk into these classes, you can feel it instantly in a way that's almost tangible.
Well, that's interesting, because you said that as soon as you started here. You know, for us, it felt like we just knew them, and it was kind of something we were used to, but when you started, that was the first thing you said.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
So I hope at this point, it's been made abundantly clear how important the community aspect is to the vision of this program. So that extends beyond just the community built within the program as a whole, but as it's connected to our community as a school building, as a district, and furthermore as the community of Rye itself. So therefore, to make sure that we're highlighting the learning that's happening in our classrooms, the style of education that's going on, and showcasing all of the projects and outreaches, everything that's happening, we're -- a monthly newsletter's been put together. And this is not only distributed to parents of students that are within the academy so that they have a clear picture of what their student is, their child is doing every morning when they walk into the doors of the library, but also to make sure that the high school community is aware of the things that we are doing as well and how they can maybe get involved. And then just to be able to showcase to the district as a whole, what is the learning that's happening. I know that it kind of seems abstract, but you'll see that there's a course showcase section of this newsletter that really talks about the nitty-gritty daily grind that's going in, that is all of the communication that is happening amongst our students. It highlights the choice that they have and how they get to use their voice to be able to kind of bridge the gap between whatever topic of interest it is that they're looking at within all of their courses. So this is really meant to be sent on a monthly basis, just so that everybody's aware of what's happening, because it's meaningful to us, because we live it every day, but it could be more meaningful as well as if people are seeing what's going on. And so the hope is that people can feel connected in that way as well.
And we realized that we were kind of taking a chance in some of the program building, too, that it's something that was a little uncomfortable to some parents, taking a risk what they considered a risk. We felt very comfortable it wasn't on it, and one of the ways that we thought of decreasing that actually, a really good suggestion from a mom, was to have a monthly newsletter. And so that was kind of what the motivation was behind it, is we know you feel a little nervous. How do we help you feel less nervous?
So you'll see up here, this is kind of a classroom perspective, some different pictures and some blurbs about what is really happening within the classroom right now. You'll notice that, and I'll talk more about action research in a minute, the STEM 12, that is really that course, at this point in time, working on their literature view for their topic of choice. We've engrossed ourselves in this massive Trex project, thank you, Alex, to be able to collect so much plastic in the hope of not only getting the voice, getting the word out there as to how you can go ahead and recycle this on your own, so that it's not just this...
Stretchy plastic.
Stretchy plastic. What is it? It doesn't... crinkle, no crinkle. Anyway, so far we've raised, I think we updated it today.
192.
192?
Yeah.
Good. 192 pounds of plastic with a goal of 500 and then some. And also with a goal of being able to educate people as to how they can do this on their own. So these are the kind of initiatives that are just genuinely happening authentically in the classroom, as well as, we've talked about so much paper this year and how to... I wasn't there for that, the holiday cards. I heard that was fun. And then presenting projects to elementary school students, again, just trying to get in the food drive that the STEM 11 class organized, and just, again, the community outreach is huge. So, action research. What is it? How does it function? It is really kind of the culminating course of this program that truly highlights every aspect of its vision. As Suzanne had mentioned, it's kind of that meeting in the middle of students having their own choice to be in time and space and support to be able to really engage themselves in topics that interest them. So when we started this, literally the conversation was, think of things that you are passionate about, whatever it may be. Take some time, come up with a few topics, do a little bit of some initial Googling, see what information is out there, and really find what it is that you think that you will be able to sustain yourself in researching in for the remainder of the year. Because without that, the research doesn't have... It's hard, it's tedious, but if they're able to find something that they love and that they're passionate about, and they feel like they have the motivation to make a positive change through in some sort of community, then I can't think of anything better to motivate my students with. So, we spend the first part of the year really teaching these. It's a combination of either an experimental design from the science perspective or an engineering design from the science perspective, talking about collecting data, all the statistics stuff that goes into research and making sure that it's done well and it's done properly. And so we've spent a lot of time really honing those skills, so that now we're to the point where they've really identified what they love and what they're passionate about and what they want to make a change in, that they can hit the ground running, and we can just be there to support them. So currently, our students are engaging themselves in a literature review, just kind of formulating and finding the conversation around the topic that they're interested in. That way, they can identify an avenue or something within that conversation that is unique to them, where they can add on to it and not just duplicate, where they can be their own voice within that sort of community or within that topic. So they're to the point now where they really get to begin that research, collect data, but with the mind of knowing that their goal is to implement change somehow and determine if that change has been made in a positive manner, and reflect upon that to see how they can adjust to make sure that it is as good as it can be. So it's really this reflective sort of research, where it's not only formulating the conversation on what's happening and finding a way that they can contribute to it, but making sure that they are able to collect data in a way that supports whether or not their change, the change they are trying to make, is as thorough as it could be and make adjustments based off of it. So it really does hone in on all of the aspects of the value. Research-based, it is completely student-choice, they have their voice in it, we work with them constantly, feedback, back and forth. These are the things, they constantly tell us things that they are thinking, and we are just there to support. And it has a reflection piece to it, too, constantly, constantly reflecting.
So the idea that we're never really done.
No.
Yeah.
And of course, community, right? The hope is that they can implement some sort of positive change in our community or in a community that is meaningful to them.
So we're going to talk through a little bit about why we are in this cohort, working with our students, working with our teachers. On the back end, we are knee-deep in thinking about our next cohort and scheduling for the next school year. And as we said in the beginning, we always want to go back to that mission statement where everything is co-creative. We've really put a process together this year while we're educating our families for the sophomore grade that's coming up. We want to make sure that our students are involved in this process and everyone a part of the team. So throughout January, we've been holding virtual information sessions for our sophomore class, where we are doing parent sessions at night, student sessions during the day, and not only are the students... And not only are the students hearing from us, they're also hearing from their peers that are a part of the program and the experiences, right? The good and the bad and the fixing, and we don't hold anything back. We want to be really transparent about what's working because we want them to know that their voice will be heard when they're in this program. So with all of us on the team collectively, we hold a series of information sessions come February first, that's when our application is due, so it's fully live right now. And Ms. Shore and I have been receiving great emails from families that are very interested.
I love the ones from the students that are like, they're so excited, what else can I do? I love those.
So we will be going through a series of, like I said, information sessions in January, application will be due in February, and then the Rye Academy Committee will be meeting to review those applications, and then students will know by the third week in February if they were accepted. Through that time, they'll have that period of time till March to have conversations with their families, with their guidance counselors, with other members in the school to just get feedback and make a final decision by March first. So Dr. Meyer and I had worked on that. We feel if you have passion, right, if you have a purpose and you have potential, this could be the program for you. So we wanted to share a quick video with you.
The other, probably the most frequent question I think we got is, who's the right fit for the program? And it's an interesting question because there isn't an answer. So it's really like not, everybody asks it, but there's never an answer. So it makes it kind of challenging. The answer is that we actually go through, and we didn't the first year, but last year we changed it to being a blind process for entry into the program because we didn't want there to be things that would prevent us from seeing reality or anything like that. And so we asked the kids to be really genuine in their responses, and we are looking for a balanced cohort. You guys have to admit, there are some way different types of people in the academy, but they come together because they're all there for the same reason. And so we are looking for a variety of reasons why the students are applying and to balance those things, and we're looking for their passion for trying something different. And so while there's not an answer of who we're looking for, the only characteristic I think is super important, is that they will be motivated if they're interested in their own topic. If you can be passionate, it's a good fit. That's why the got passion's important. Sometimes a little passionate, but I think it's important that you understand that there isn't really somebody who's a good fit. And so it's one of the more complicated questions, but I trust our judgment when all of us look at it together. When we end up in the same place, it's the right group of kids, which you have to trust your colleagues, and we all do it blindly and then come together. So it does make a difference in the way that we do it.
So we want to thank our students, as we had asked them, you know, how can you contribute? And so what is your why for joining the academy? And what do you feel is the value of being in it? So we want to share this awesome video that they created for us.
They mumble a little. No excuse, Alex.
To me, the academy is a community.
It is amazing.
Imaginative.
It's elastic.
It's where I can learn an alternative way.
It's a place where you can be yourself.
Cool.
Very different.
Experience-driven.
Fun community.
Place of creativity.
A place of personal growth.
Amazing.
It's like Jeffrey, you learn everything from A to Z.
Collaborative.
Tubular.
Creative.
It is a place for questions.
Uneducated.
The great decision.
It's great.
She didn't play the video a second time. So we'll talk you through this piece really quickly. I know that we still have a couple pieces to go. In terms of professional learning, and we're going to break up the pieces, when Caitlin and I met this summer and really tried to revise what we were doing last year, what was working, what wasn't, we took the feedback from the students, we took the feedback from the teachers, and we really needed a structure that we were lacking before. So we kind of broke it down into two ideas. One is that we wanted to make sure that the vision and mission was being seen regularly. And so we're working with an outside consultant, Tony, who comes in and works with us once a month. And then also into the curriculum work, we want to make sure that we're revising our courses to be as meaningful and authentic as we can. That takes time and it takes work. There have definitely been changes and we're getting there. I think the students will tell you that it's been meaningful and authentic to them, and that's really what's most important to us, but we want to keep pushing in that direction. So Caitlin and Bill have been working on doing learning walks and curriculum work. They do two learning walks a month and a curriculum work session. So twice a month, we meet with our full team of teachers and administrators and do sessions that have focus questions based on the vision and mission to make sure that the work we're doing and the conversations we're having all align with where we want to be and what we want to do.
So based on that, from the learning walks that we talked about, it was amazing to actually go through each other's classes together, Bill and I and the teachers, and at the end, have conversations about the big common themes and touchpoints that we're seeing in the classrooms. And when we came together as a group, we were like, wow, we're saying the exact same thing that's happening and that we're seeing and that we want to grow upon, which was awesome, that we're in alignment with, you know, what the mission says and where we want to go as a group, which was amazing. So through that work, we are working with our teachers after school as part of some curriculum work that will be starting this week actually, two-hour sessions, and we're going to be doing some curriculum mapping to have alignment with the courses that we're teaching and also our advisory periods. And from that work, what we plan on doing this week is actually just mapping out the units for all the teachers to see, I'm in eleventh grade and I'm in humanities, and these are what my units and my projects looks like and my topics and the skills that I want my students to learn in addition to content, same in twelfth grade and same in advisory. And based on that, we'll be doing some work together where we're going to be designing rubrics that have interchangeable components, because while the content is also important, we want to say when you're leaving the academy, these are the skills that we want to see across the board that our students are going to learn and gain upon each year. So we're really excited to start this work with our teacher. It's been a long way. We've had this now program for two years, but the first year to go through the curriculum, to teach it, to get used to interdisciplinary work, to getting used to working in partnerships and co-teaching was just a task in itself.
With kids who have a say.
With kids who have a say, doing it virtually with COVID. I mean, there were just so many things that I just want to commend everyone that was a part of this program, all the challenges. If you could do it through that, we can do it through anything. So now we're ready to say, okay, we've seen all these pieces together and we're agreements on what it should look like collectively, we're ready to take those next steps. And so this is the work that we're starting to do the rest of the year after school with our teachers.
So in terms of the next steps, I think there's sort of a micro piece and a macro here, and I think you can see, the micro piece is growing the program, growing it with students. And what we're shooting for this next year is to expand the enrollment to twenty juniors, and then we will keep the current eleventh graders, fourteen eleventh graders will be the fourteen seniors. So I think this is really important in terms of calibrating the growth with measured success that we've had up to this point. But I think the macro piece is bigger here, and I think the success of the academy won't just be measured based on the success that these students have within it, but how it impacts the broader community and culture of the whole school. And I think everything you've heard today is what I would hope, and I think everyone here would hope, is modeled in other departments, other classrooms, the ways we think about assessment, the ways we think about research, the ways we think about action research, students driving the learning. And so I think you see this team building that's been very intentional and explicit, but this idea of how, as we move forward, do we not only grow the size of the program, but we think about ways in which we can grow its reach, bringing more teachers in, exposing teachers to the work of what's going on within the academy, allowing opportunities maybe for additional electives down the road in the afternoon that students outside of the academy could have. I mean, there is so much potential. And if this continues to be as successful as it is with the students who are a part of it, I think you could see a lot of ways in it could shift the culture and climate, what happens in classrooms throughout the whole school, and I think that's pretty exciting. But Caitlin, I know will speak just about the physical changes that are coming as well.
So we're excited, as you've all heard before, the Capital Bomb Project, which we're so excited to be up there, is one of the things that we can't wait to implement. As you heard, our classes are interdisciplinary, they work in partnerships, they're collaborative, there's also some times where it's just independent, quiet thinking and working. And so having them to be able to be on the third floor with those spaces, with those learning hubs, with the technology, with the flexible furniture, to be able to kind of adapt and work in any configuration that they need to in the moment, because that's how quick that we change things that are happening up there. Being adapted to circle time, to advisory, letting the kids come in and say, I want to sit in this type of furniture today, or I want it configured this way, is something we're super excited about. So we can't wait to have our students move upstairs into that space.
All right, so I think the other question that we haven't answered is, what are the parents' things? So we invited two parents who we have worked with the last two years, who have kind of watched the trajectory of the program, where it started and where it is, to speak. We're going to ask you two to be mindful of time, but come join us. So Mr. Surak and Mr. Kaufman agreed to come join us. We've gotten some good feedback from them over the years. And full disclosure, the reason we asked is that their feedback has been honest and open to allow us to grow, so we know that they'll be honest with you. Mr. Surak, it's okay.
Sure. Yeah, no, I thank you so much for having us here. My son James is a senior in the academy, and frankly, when this idea came up, it all sounded wonderful, but there were some real concerns that we had. You know, having your kid on a certain track at Rye High School is a thing, and that's what we expected. So to sort of diverge from this was a real leap of faith. And I actually had a conversation with Mr. Kreitsch before this to talk about how, you know, how we were going to take these ideas and really operationalize them. And I have expressed this to Suzanne, it's been transformative for my son. It really has, it's been amazingly, you know, the content is wonderful and what I see from him is a child who comes home and he's excited to tell me about what projects he's working on and how do you take these ideas and this passion and these interests and operationalize them and really change, you know, make some change. And he came home today, he talks and talks and talks and talks about it, which is wonderful after a long day. But, and he told me today, he met with the mayor and was talking about the recycling project that they were working on. So, you know, I think these are things that, you know, we look to the next step for him as a senior, and, you know, these are things that'll carry him to college, because we all know that college is, you know, is more about these things than just rote learning and things like that. So it's been an absolutely wonderful experience, and we're very sort of grateful that this came along at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Glenn Kaufman. My son Caleb in tenth grade read about this and said, Dad, this is the first interesting thing I've seen about school. And so he was sold, but I was a little, maybe a little bit more discerning. And it was, you know, it was a pretty complex thing to think about because, and as you went down the path of it, it became even more complex because there were conflicts. You couldn't be in this AP class if you wanted to be in the academy when it was given, so on and so forth. And I will, I'll echo the thought that, you know, there's a leap of faith, that this will actually be done well. There's a further leap of faith when you're looking at COVID and they say, no, actually, we're just, no, we're still going to do it. Really? Wow, you're just going to do it? Okay. So, you know, my first like cats off to, you know, they would be anyways, to Suzanne, to these educators, I mean, I'm listening to them, I'm sitting back there and I'm listening to these educators talk with, like they're going to jump out of their seats, about what they do and what they're doing. And what they're doing is hard, right? What they're doing is hard, they're creating something, right? They're not just, again, back to the rote versus the new, I mean, they're not just doing, and so, and I think that's where a lot of this comes from. But I will say that the, you know, there were a lot of, there were certainly bumps along the way last year. I think, you know, I've talked to Suzanne, I've talked to a few of these folks, and they, you know, they're always dying for input. They want input. They really, for some reason, seem to think this is going to be, you know, huge for the school.
Not just the nice input, we like the other input.
No, no, that's right, but they want it to be huge, and it's really great. And I've, you know, and I guess when my son this, no, last year, came to me with, you know, on a computer with a tax form, and because he was doing a project, because he was exploring the College Board and what was, what the College Board was really about and all the issues associated with the College Board and so on and so forth. And he showed me a tax form to, you know, associating where, assessing where they were investing their money and why it was all overseas and so on and so forth. But that's all really cool. To me, it stopped at, Dad, do you understand these tax forms? Like, my son would never see a tax form. Where would he ever want to? But in the context of stuff, right, the whole notion of not being rote, of letting a kid choose what they want to do, makes them excited about a tax form. I mean, like, right? That's like, I don't know what's better to say. So in any event, I think it's been fantastic and it's really shaped, it's really shaped Caleb's way he looked, having gone to all these school visits with him, shaped the way he looked at colleges. I mean, I could see him, when people would talk about something that resonated as an academy-like thing, you know, he would get energized by it. And that, and anything that makes kids get excited about education means they'll get a great education. And I think Rye should be really proud to have sponsored this, endorsed it and so on, and certainly the folks that are involved, and it should take a lot of pride from what they've done. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then, yeah, then we had our questions.
So, we're back for this part. We'll be the first to say, kind of to echo the statements that both those parents made. We took a massive leap of faith joining this program. We were as apprehensive as the parents were, for different reasons, but we were equally apprehensive. And so any questions you have for either of us, for any of our teachers, you can ask them now in this open forum, and I'm sure Ms. Shore will be comfortable sending you our emails if you want to email us after to ask any questions you don't want asked now, or if we run out of time. So, any questions?
Thank you, Alex.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you. Listening to both of you talk about this experience and how it has changed how you engage with learning is something that, for some time, as a board, different configurations of this board have talked about, how do we, how do we foster that? How do we make that feeling of wanting to engage in learning more part of our school district? And so what's wonderful to hear is that this is something we're starting to see. So thank you both and the parents for taking that leap of faith, because without that, we wouldn't be able to sit here and see this actually happening in reality. So that's what I just wanted to say before I'll open it up to anyone else who has specific questions, but.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just first thank you to everybody. People ask me all the time why I would have taken on a fourth term on the board, and this is why. Because we get to see years of work of dedicated professionals come to life, and we see it in, I've never heard the word engagement used more in one night than I did tonight, and it is just music to my ears.
And it's not us.
And it's not us.
It's not us.
It's out there. So, I was sitting in Suzanne's office not too long ago, and we had this wonderful conversation that was based on the first principle of education, what do we need for education? We need good teachers, we need curriculum, we need engaged students, that's it. You start with those three things, you can't, that's where education starts. So when we think about engagement and students who want to be there learning, we talk about project-based learning, we talk about student-centered learning, these, all these terms that have been bubbling up over the last five, seven years, it's coming together in exactly this model. So my question is, you already talked about it a little bit, how do you take that entire model, which is based on, step one is engagement, step two is engagement, and every step along the way is engagement, how do we make that part of the entire district, not just the academy?
We've actually, we've talked a lot about this, and I think that's part of what had us ask Bill to join us this year. So as a staff developer, he has a specific skill set, which this plays perfectly into. He sees vision and mission, he's an incredible teacher, has a great understanding of turnkeying things, and works with our teachers daily. And so showing them some of those things is helpful. The newsletters, Ashley mentioned, getting teachers to see those successes. And the honest answer is that they're like a Petri dish. So we have the academy that we're hoping will continue to evolve with practices and never become stagnant and always serve as a place where people can go. They did their Friendsgiving, and teachers started to come in as part of it, because there was too much food for any humans to intake. And so people started to come in during it, and now those teachers are coming back. Like, they keep coming back to visit. We had Beth Neighbors, who's sitting back there, she filled in for Ashley for math as a leave replacement, and Beth, you actually ended up liking it. So there's a piece of exposure that I think we need to keep having and building, and it needs to be the focus of our building, and we have Bill.
I mean, I don't know if that helps, but.
I mean, I don't know if that helps, but I would say, my two thoughts to that is you need transparency. So, just even this tonight is a part of that work, right? Just voicing it, centering it, talking about it. But I think the piece that was also so obvious in your experience is also true in the teacher experience. Like, you have to connect teachers to their own passions. Like, you have to offer them the opportunity to engage in the thing that brought them into the classroom. And the challenge is, when you have College Board classes driving the curriculum or the direction of a school or a culture, like, that isn't intrinsic, it's external. So, there is a ceiling to what you're ever going to get out of that. And you can get a lot out of it. I mean, we've seen that, but I think we've also seen, we've sort of come to the end of that road. And so, when you talk about an alternative or a leap of faith, yeah, it's got to be taken, but when, when teachers can embody the same passion that their students embody, like, that's when you know you've got something. And I think that is what needs to start to spread.
Strategy plastic.
And then I would also just add to that, you know, you have to really think carefully about what's making it work and why, in order to take it to another environment, in order to take it school-wide or district-wide. What are the things that are adding to that engagement? What's, what is leading these kids towards solving problems creatively and wanting to do so? And if you can pinpoint what that is, you can also take it, take it outside of the academy.
That leads me to another piece. And one of the wonderful things about what I'm hearing about this is that, once you start with engagement, it feeds on itself, right? Because you, then you get the community involvement, then you get, you start working on things you want to be working on, and you, and the learning sticks, and passion is there. But one of the things I wanted to explore deeper is, you're starting with a small cohort of students who seem like they were chosen based on high levels of engagement to start with, people with passion, they want to be there. Tell me if I'm wrong, this is what I'm, what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I could interrupt you just to refocus it a little bit. Absolutely. In terms of motivated by their interests, I would not have said, would you guys agree, always motivated by school? It is not, it is not, while our students are highly motivated and engaged, I would not say that if you had gone in and seen them in traditional quote-unquote classes last year, that you would have labeled them the same. I think that they are highly motivated in this environment.
Perfect. That's, that's exactly what I'm hoping here, because that's, that's where you can make it bigger, and there's no limit. Then the question is, when I say there's no limit, what are the limits? Like, we're doing 1420. It feels like this could grow larger, faster. What's the vision around capacity and growth and where this may take itself?
So, that, that's a great question that we are asking ourselves and talking about what that looks like, because there are different models for programs like the academy in different places, and the team went out and studied what they were doing at Byram Hills, what they were doing in Chappaqua, what they were doing in Scarsdale, and looking at different programs. And so, you, you have to make a few decisions. Does this become, does it stay an 11th and 12th grade program? Does it become a 10th and 11th grade program? Does it become a full day, a partial day? So, I think we're at that inflection point, where we need to be thinking about where we are several years down the road, knowing that for next year, the good move in year three is increasing the number of juniors coming into the program. But we've already started having that conversation of where we are in 2023, 2024.
Great. So, let me flip the question on a little bit. Is there anything about the program as we're doing it now that limits it, its growth? Or would we have to make changes to it to make it bigger? Or is this kind of the starting of a scalable program?
I don't, I think the thinking is not something that's limited ever. I think that we can turnkey some of that. I think as teachers develop different passions, different interests, we can kind of shift toward that thinking, and in all disclosure, I think it's something that we're asking them to do anyway.
Right.
Maybe not to the point that they're automatically engaging outside, because that becomes, resources outside becomes a concern when you're talking about 1,000 kids.
And, and keeping that sense of community. There is something to be said for the smallness and sort of the sense of community, but as we, and I'm going to go back to what I said earlier with pathways, as we continue to develop different pathways throughout Rye High School, we're creating a whole engineering focus at the high school that hasn't existed before. Do we look at the model of the academy as we build that out and build it in a similar fashion? You know, there's a school on Long Island, Baldwin, that's developed all these academies. There's a school in Pennsylvania that we're, we're going to visit at some point.
As soon as COVID's over.
That has all sorts of academies, one being an ID Academy that exists in the school. So, we've been, we've been studying this notion of academies plural across the school system and what that looks like, so.
No, I think it's great. I mean, obviously, I'm, I love the idea of having multiple pathways. What am I, what I want to make sure we're doing is scaling this to the demand, so we're not saying no to students who want to be in it, right?
No, what I will say is, we will end up in that place. We, we had students, we did not have enough seats for students last year, and I know we will not have enough seats for students this year. We're working on making that, but the problem you have is, the more interest and demand, and the more kids that want to be in the program, you just, you have to do it thoughtfully and carefully.
Totally understand. I just don't want it to be self-limiting at some point. I know it has to grow on its own and has to scale, but as long as we get to see it's something we can scale to demand, that's what I would swear.
And the key, you know, the notion of building out the thinking and the instruction and the structures that we put in place across the larger school, you know, there are a lot of places that have built programs like this with the intention that it would be like a lab site within the school, and they never end up getting to that point. I think one of the really strategic decisions made here was that we have staff that are teaching in the academy, but they're also teaching in the traditional program in the high school. It, I don't want to put Ashley on the spot, and I think Melissa's in the back there, but I imagine that teaching in the academy has an impact on how you're teaching in your classes that aren't in the academy.
I just want to point out that most of them are here just because they want to be.
I can't see them all back there, but.
Thank you.
So, I would say that, that impact alone leads to academy-type teaching and learning beyond the walls of the third floor that used to be dead, unusable space that will now be their home in a couple of weeks.
And then my last, as long as we keep the conversation going, is how do, how are we communicating this for the seniors who are looking at colleges now? How are we communicating to the colleges the difference in the program?
That's a good question. So, I, before I did it, I did check with the superintendent. I did make the strategic decision this past year to change the way that I am reporting things out, and so it is listed for what it's worth. To me, I already knew this intrinsically as the most rigorous program that we have because it pushes each kid as far as they can go. So, for each of our students, it really is and can be the most rigorous thing that that child explores, and so that's kind of our thinking. So, that's one piece. The other thing is that I was nervous. It's a reality, and I know we have to address it. The colleges almost laugh at me when I try to explain what it is because other places have it. So, it is not something that's unusual to them. They look at it, they see that it's interdisciplinary, they understand what it is. The counselors have had no communication issues, and in fact, our students have had a lot of really good interviews because of their ability to speak to a lot of these things. And I'm fortunate that I know them well enough that I was able to write a lot of letters or recommendations as well, and they never, it doesn't seem to faze them. They're fully versed in the type of program that we have.
So, it sounds like there's just, it's positive feedback, that, like, you're doing this now, and it's very good.
All, the only negative thing has been, has been worry on the kids and parents parts, that now that we've been through two cycles of seniors in the college process, has not seemed to have an ounce of reason for concern. And if you met me early on, I was very open with families that I did not know if it would. Now, I feel comfortable saying it does not.
That's fantastic. I'm done, sorry.
I think, I mean, there's so many things about this opportunity for our students that is invaluable. I think for, for me, the idea that you're talking about engagement, but you're not talking about it superficially. And so often in education, it is, we want our kids to be engaged, we want our students to be engaged, and so we create, and, you know, in education, you create things that look great and feel great, and we've got colorful posters on, posters on the wall, but it's lacking the depth. And that is very obvious that that is not what is happening here. And that's really hard to do. It's, it's close to impossible to do well, and it clearly is being done very well. And you all should be very, just excited about what you're creating, not just academically, but clearly the impact that you're having on students well beyond their junior and senior years of high school. Because as the father said, when their kids are going to college, this is then where you grow from here, right? It's not about what, who fought in the Battle of Lexington and Concord, it's what did that mean? What is, how do you process that information and use it in such a way that propels your thinking and your ability to think, read, and write forward? And that's really hard to do, but it's also exciting when you see it happening. And so, it's amazing. And I say that, but at the same time, while we want to grow it, and it should be grown, that doesn't work for all kids. So, it is this delicate balance where we want to make sure that those kids who are raising their hands, who want to be in that environment, where academically that enriches them and nurtures them, we have more typical learners of my age, for sure. You know, it was sitting in a row and raising your hand, and you're the tallest kid, so you sit in the back row, and that's how I learned and went to school. So, there, but that works for some people. And so, it's this idea of being thoughtful about, do we take a look, and how do you look at it to provide all of those right experiences for so many kids? And I just, I'm really excited about all of those opportunities. The last thing I will say, that nobody here will be surprised by, the idea that kids are not engaged unless they feel part of the community. And what your comment was, was to say that those kids during your advisories are building these relationships, so you can have these really robust conversations and challenge each other as learners and thinkers, is amazing. And if that's all that came out of it, I'd be happy, and it's clearly not. It's just, it's just, it's just the tip of the iceberg. And so, I'm beyond excited that you all are getting this experience and that the district is really taking the bold step to do it, but being thoughtful about its next steps and how to make sure we do it well.
Did you guys want?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, echo everyone, all my fellow board members in terms of just the general excitement. I feel like this is one of the best meetings we've ever had in terms of what we've heard from both the staff, the administrators, and the students, and the parents, and just having, all of the stakeholders have that input. And, you know, someone that comes from the business community, to one of the father's points, you know, I spend a lot of time around recruitment and human capital development, and the traits and the characteristics that you're developing in this program is what we're all looking for when we're recruiting, right? These are the, you know, these are the characteristics that we spend so much time trying to identify and source in the talent that we're trying to develop and nurture, and, and, you know, trying to measure impact in all the things that you're doing, both in terms of community as well as within the school itself. It's great, and I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for you now, and I think you'll be well-positioned in a, in a strong position when you go into college and beyond. So, kudos for the district for putting this into place for all these years. I know there's been a lot of hard work and effort in getting this set up, and so I'm glad to be able to participate and at least witness the success to date that you guys have been able to achieve. So, congratulations again.
I'll just briefly say, I just wanted to say thank you to not only the panelists, but the students and the parents for your description. Before tonight, I didn't fully understand what, you know, a day in the life looked like at the academy, so you sharing it was really helpful for me, so thank you. I also appreciated the honest feedback about the fears and, and the bumps in the road, and where it's come today, and where you want it to grow. And thank you. I appreciated Chris's comments because I had a lot of questions about capacity, and I think, you know, about trying to grow this and bring it to the broader community in our district is really important. So, just thank you for, for all your sharing tonight.
And one question for the two of you. Are you getting requests from your other peers to try to see if they can join? Are they asking you about your experience? Are they jealous that you have had the opportunity to be in this program? What's been the, the feedback from your fellow students?
Yeah, so I have a brother in 10th grade, which means he's right in the recruiting process. We're kind of polar opposites of each other. My interests don't align with his at all for the most part, and yet he is so excited to apply into the academy. That might be news to you, Ms. Plant. But, but I know from him and his peers, and from the peers who have, or from the students who have reached out to me, especially during all of the programming we've done, it's been overwhelmingly positive. One of the 10th graders texted me the other day to see if they could come in during an advisory and kind of see what the classroom looks like, and they left having one of the, their words here, but one of the best experiences of their entire high school experience because of the community that we had. And that was an advisory that a bunch of us thought was like, a little boring and kind of new to us. For an outsider to step in and, for an outsider to step in and really say, like, wow, this is such a cool community that I want to be a part of, for an activity that people in the academy's feedback was like, there are improvements here, as there always are, was kind of eye-opening to just how far we've progressed as a community, as an academy, really.
Yeah, I, my brother does not go to Rye. He goes to private school, but I have several family friends who have children who are in 10th grade, who are in the recruiting process. And to Ms. Anderson's point, it's, it's not always the right program for every single kid. Some kids are more traditional learners, and that's why Alex and I have been giving our phone numbers and our emails to any kid who shows interest, because it's, it's so important to have that conversation with anyone who's interested in the program about, you know, is this right for you, and what do you want to get out of an education, and what kind of student are you? And that can be really difficult to ask in a setting like this, if there's a camera pointed on you, if your parents are sat next to you. But it's just been so exciting to have those conversations with kids and being like, you know, I'm off to college next year, but you still have two years, and you don't know when you're going to take your ACT, and you have like so much ahead of you. And so, it's, it's just very exciting to get to kind of help them piece together what their high school experience looks like.
Fantastic.
So, the last question I will ask is that I would be curious if there's an opportunity to learn from you, once you do go off to college, how this has impacted that experience for you?
I can, yeah, I can answer for them. So, Bill is slated in our timeline, I don't know if he saw it yet, to do exit, oh, he did, good, he's nodding, to do exit interviews and an exit program with the seniors leaving. We do have some anecdotal data from last year's seniors, but it was only a half a cohort. So, they had only done senior year, they didn't do junior and senior year. So, these students can give us a different perspective because they experienced both years, full curriculum, and they also saw last year to this year, so they've seen the growth, and we need to know what they see as their next step. So, Bill will be doing those interviews with them toward the end.
And now we have Alex's phone number.
We have a recording with it in it.
We can chase him down when he gets into college, and Claire, to find out how it's impacted their, their choices when they're in college.
Well, and especially to touch on that.
He's like, wait, I have it right here. I'll text you.
I think to touch on that, I know every single one of us kind of jumped at the chance to be involved in any sort of academy-related thing. Tonight, I know there was a lot of questions about, why do you guys get to go?
Because we've made you do this four times before.
Not why have to you go talk to the board? Why do you get to go talk to the board? That's like, that's it right there.
Which is something, Mr. Kaufman's point, that's something you should never hear from students about. I want to talk to the board. And so, we'll all probably be willing to give interviews post-graduation about our experience in college.
You guys can go last then.
No, I know in my own personal experience, I'm going to Barnard next year. I applied specifically to a program in Barnard that is very similar to the academy, where it's very research-driven, and it is a small cohort of students, and there's a lot of faculty involvement. So, already in that sense, like, it's something that I really do want to continue with.
That's great. Thank you very much, everyone. We really appreciate you coming out tonight and being so willing to do so, and, and giving us the, the highlights, and we're excited to see where this can go. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'm extraordinarily proud of all the accomplishments. I hope you guys are proud of yourselves.
Caitlin, I'm writing notes about how excited. Well, we're excited, and this is going to sound super cheesy, but when we first started out, I don't think either one of us, no offense, was really too confident with this. It felt really insecure to us because we, neither one of us had a background in interdisciplinary instruction or a school within a school. And site visits, while they're great, don't really make you feel like you can do it yourself. So, I think that both of us are sitting here passing notes back and forth, like, it worked. Like, we're excited. Like we're excited, we adore these guys, it's growing. We appreciate being pushed and having people have faith in us, but.
I think we remember sitting in Dr. Byrne's office and he's like, I have an idea. And we're like, no, here we go.
It's not a big, so I'm like.
One of the many ideas. And it was, you know, thinking about a school within a school and how do we build this and what could it look like? And let's try next year of the year. And we were like, here we go. And so it's just been great to see with all the bumps in the learning curves. I think we've grown too as professionals, as what we can do and how we can support and, you know, rethink about what education looks like, so.
And the feeling of watching them, knowing that they're leaving and how hard that feels to me, I think is a sign that that's, that's a success. So it's hard, you know, they've, they've changed me as much as I think we've tried to change them. So I think it's a good thing, and I appreciate you pushing and having faith. So thank you.
Congrats again.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. And I'm going to ask our district clerk to put a timer on for that, she sits over there, so that we can keep on track. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. And as a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will move on. Oh, oh, sorry. You can come right up here to the podium, sorry.
How are you? Hi.
I didn't hear you in the back, so I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be.
Oh, so state your name, address, and if you're representing an organization, and then you can make your comment.
So my name is Carrie Mulhern. I live at 169 Locust Ave here in Rye. I am actually here to support some of the parents that are behind the mask choice movement that started a few days ago here in Rye. And I'm here just to kind of tell you a little bit about my story and why I think it's important that we really focus on this mass choice and, you know, what's going on around in, in schools and in the community that maybe you guys aren't seeing. So my husband and I recently moved here over the summer, and we have four children. One of them does have an IEP. She is at Osborne. She is a twin, and I will give you a quick story on this. Earlier this week, she was at the playground and her speech therapist was walking out after school. She came over to me and she was very enthusiastic in regards to my child's improvement since early September. I then went home and I was very excited. And I shared the news with my siblings who, they do also have children that have IEPs. And the first thing that I thought about that I didn't even ask my child at this point was when you're in that classroom with your teacher and you're getting pulled out for both reading and for speech, are you taking your mask down? So she could see that you still have a little bit of that lisp that we're working on. And her answer was, no, I'm not allowed to take my mask down. Yet her teacher did just tell me about two hours prior to that that she is seeing a significant amount of improvement in my daughter's speech as well as reading. I find that very interesting because I was a speech pathology major in college, and I do not understand how, as a speech pathologist, you're able to sit there and tell me my child is improving tremendously if you can't see the way she's speaking and the sounds that are coming out of her mouth. So I am very eager to find out what the school plans on doing for this. Today was an awesome morning in our house to know that our kids were able to come to school without wearing a mask. And I will tell you this, my children, they are seven-year-old twins and a little guy who just turned five. And I actually recorded it and they didn't see me, but I heard them when they were brushing their teeth and they were talking about who they were so excited to see and whose faces and smiles they could see because they're new to this community. So all they know are they're friends with masks on. And that is not a normal, like I hope we know that that's not normal for children. And it was so exciting when we dropped my son off this morning when he ran into school and they were, and he was greeted by a teacher who had her mask here. And she was able to see Sullivan's really beautiful smile and his really wiggly tooth, and he was able to show that. When I dropped my twins off today at Osborne, I normally drop them off and I keep going. As we were pulling up and they were about to get out of the car, they both asked me, they were like, mommy, can you walk us in today? And in my head, I'm like, ugh, I'm never going to find a parking spot, but sure, like, let's do it. And as we were walking, one of them started to cry. And I said to her, why are you, there's no need for tears, like, why are you crying? And she said, because I was told by another student that when people don't wear masks, they're going to kill somebody. And I'm like, okay, well, that conversation never happens in our house. Like that word is never used. So I said to her, you know, that's not the truth. Like I would never put you in harm's way. The other, her sister, she began getting very emotional when she saw the other kids without masks on, or excuse me, wearing masks. And she said, mom, can I please put my mask on? And I said, no, you are not putting your mask on. There is zero reason for you to put a mask on. Time and time again, the statistics show our children are not the ones. They're, they're the ones that we've been pushing off. They're the ones that are getting hurt by this. And we need to do something, and that's why I'm here on behalf of the parents and whoever supports this movement. But I really hope, being new to this town, that we can do better for our kids. I will wear a mask, I'm blue in the face. I'm 37 years old and I don't care about that. I care about my kids and I care about them being able to see people's smiles because this is, this is what's important. And I just hope you guys kind of recognize that and we can do something about this. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to make sure that nobody, if there's somebody else in the back that didn't hear me, so I don't cut anyone off.
Hi, Tim Connors, 15 Anne Lane. How are you? So, Carolyn, awesome, great job. Agree with everything you said. I'm not going to get into the debate about masks and all this stuff. My family and I, we've had enough. We're moving to Florida, seems like a smart option. My kids, my kids toured schools down there, public, private. Nobody's wearing masks, numbers aren't up. Again, we're not going to get into debate. We are moving and I feel like I'm here maybe a little bit wasting my time, but something happened today in my daughter's class. She's in Rye Middle. Today was obviously a legal hurdle for everybody, kind of weird situation, very gray area, right? Was it kind of make-believe situation to believe that masks were going to be optional for the rest of the year? So she decided, like many students today, not to wear masks. Totally fine, optional. Yes, Carolyn, we did hear from my daughter and my youngest daughter goes to Midland that students were, you know, pretty offensive about not wearing a mask. But really, the issue was in Rye Middle School. I'm in my daughter's class, walked in, teacher had a mask on, kids came down, half mask, some with the mask. And he actually said that if you're not wearing a mask, you need to sit in the back of the class. I have a real problem with this. We don't teach that in my house. I don't think a lot of people here are teaching that in their houses either. So my issue is, and again, this isn't my issue, this is for everybody else here that isn't leaving this district, is when these masks do come off, what is the policy going to be? How long is this going to hang around for? Are kids going to be ridiculed? Are your teachers going to pull this crap in school? It is unacceptable, it is utterly unacceptable. If someone wants to talk to me privately, I will give you the name of the teacher. I will give you my daughter's name, and we can move on from there.
Thank you. And sir, I would encourage you to, to talk with the principal. And Dr. Byrne will follow up also on that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Kudsubis, 5 Phillips Lane. Masks are child abuse. You talked a lot about engagement before. How do we engage with one another? We look at facial expressions. I don't know what anyone looks like on this panel. I don't see your facial expressions. So I don't really know what the true meaning is of what you say to us and how you're feeling. I have a senior in high school. We too will be moving to Florida soon. Our, our kids learn about three branches of government. The legislative branch makes the law. Our governor Cuomo, disgraced governor, had powers that were not given to the unelected governor. So I do not know where we are getting these mandates that are not laws from, but we can't be following this anymore. The masks are dirty, they hold bacteria. The kids are breathing in their own carbon dioxide. It's just awful. And how many of you in this room agree with that? The CDC came out the other day and said cloth, cloth masks are useless. Do you know that? So who are we listening to? The Department of Health does not make laws. We are in charge of our children, not you. We pay you. And I know the federal government gave New York State billions of dollars. And I know Rye has gotten over $500,000 for the CARES Act, for ARP, ESTER. And we'd also like to know how much money Rye got and what they are using with that money to carry out this COVID propaganda. Testing, our schools have become medical facilities. Years ago, we weren't even allowed to give kids Tylenol in school. And now we're probing their noses, crossing the blood-brain barrier with testing kits that we don't even know where they came from. Are we thinking about this? Or are we just blindly going along with the government? I think we'd like answers to all this. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you all for coming up to speak. I will just say that, you know, as a school district and as a board, we do have to adhere to the laws of New York State. I, I hear everything that you are all saying, and this is a This isn't a This is a difficult position for all families. And we are going to continue to advocate to make sure that we can get metrics around moving through this phase of the pandemic. Thank you all very much for coming and speaking. So we're going to move on now to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do we need to go through the?
Oh, we'll get there next, we'll get there later, yes. Chris Ropero, seconded by Vivek Kamath. So we'll go through each section of the agenda and see if there's any questions from the board. So the first is the, actually, for, for the consent agenda general, we actually have to do a, a particular vote on item number 703, which is the resolution to select a NISBA Area 10 candidate. So all the board members should have received a set of information about the three candidates that are running for the position. And the current, who was, the person who was the president, Peggy Zugabe, has actually become the new president of NISBA. So we will vote on her replacement. So we'll do this item now, and then we'll move on to the rest of the consent agenda. I hope that, do I need to pull the item, Lauren, separately in order to vote on it separately? Do I? No? Okay. So I'm just going to read the resolution and each of the candidate names, and then we'll take a vote. And whenever we have a majority vote of the board, then we will stop voting because the majority will have voted. So be it resolved that the Rye City School District of Education, Board of Education supports and selects, the first candidate is Cheryl Brady. So can I get a vote, a show of hands of anyone who's voting for, it looks like five, nothing. So we will not move on to go on to any of the others. So we will log our vote as Cheryl Brady for the position as the NISBA Area 10 Director. Okay, so moving on to fiscal construction. The next section is the consent agenda fiscal section. Oh, I did have one question. Was there any, was there any difference for the change in item 904, which was the contract with Riddell to the contract with, what is their name? Stadium Systems? Any monetary, significant monetary difference?
Yeah, so we anticipate a small monetary benefit to making a switch. We don't believe that we're going to be utilizing all of the services listed on Stadium, but the ones that we do utilize, we believe there is a slight unit cost benefit to the district.
And it was more about the customer service. If you recall, we had the fire in the factory. I know you
With the helmets, because we had to do all those approvals earlier in the year.
Yes, we, we got donations from Millbrook and Yonkers and districts that were helping us. Part of the frustration in that process is, was the lack of responsiveness from Riddell in trying to navigate the situation. So Susan has worked with the other company and has a much higher level of confidence. And we believe that for our kids and our program, we'll be in a better place with this change.
Okay, great. Then the next section is consent agenda professional appointments?
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the appointment of Suzanne Kelly Short as the permanent principal of the Rye High School.
So this is an amendment to item number 10.01. Okay, so can I have a motion to amend the agenda item? Are you motioned?
I need a second.
Oh, a second, a second. Vivek Kamath, so Chris Ropero, Vivek Kamath, all those in favor? Six, yeah.
Yeah, I already did, I already, sorry.
Yes.
That should be obvious.
So that item has been amended. And we are very excited for, where is she?
Right there.
Not yet, you haven't, you've just, you've only been added to the agenda, so sit back down.
We're getting to, we're getting to you. You're one step closer, Susan. Yes. Well, I didn't know where you were.
Beth, you don't get a vote, Beth. I know you raised your hand there, but.
This might be the only consent agenda in 10 years that doesn't pass. So don't, don't get too excited.
Okay, and then we have consent agenda classified appointments. And then special education. Okay, so can I have a final vote on the consent agenda? Five, nothing. So at this point At this, at this point, we would like to extend our very happy and warm congratulations to Suzanne Kelly Short. to Suzanne Kelly Short as our permanent high school principal. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Put the timer on, Lauren.
Half it, I don't need that long. Well, I love you guys, so thank you for supporting and staying after the Academy presentation. And I said this to you guys before, it has not been an easy run the last year, and I have never been more impressed and happy to work here. The support, the trust, the ability to commit and say whatever I need and what's on my mind, I'm incredibly grateful, and I feel very fortunate to work here. So thank you for putting your trust in me, even after a really bad year. And I love what I do, and that's not going to change. So thank you for putting that faith in me.
And I think we have Suzanne's main supports in the room as well?
I have, I have my husband and Christian, so they're there. And then the, can I say it?
Yes.
I won't say it. And then just like, the most supportive teachers on the planet, so I love them.
Well, just to James and Christian, thank you for letting us steal all the time away from you, for your mom and wife to be our principals. So thank you very much.
Okay. Oh, yes, yes.
I was worried, my second said.
Okay, so presentation and discussion two, policies 1440 and 2330. And I'll turn this over to Mrs. Anderson to summarize.
Twice in one night I've been called Mrs. Anderson. No, these are both second reads of these policies. We've already discussed them, some a few times. And really, this is on this agenda in the end of January. It should have been at the earlier meeting, but just due to life as we know it, it's here now.
Okay, so any comments, questions from the rest of the board?
Nope.
Okay, so that we'll expect to see those, probably the ne, no.
They're done, because it's her second, we did a first.
But we haven't voted on them, don't we have to accept them?
We'll figure that. We'll figure that.
Because we had, we had a policy earlier on the consent agenda that we, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, I think these will show up on the next agenda.
Yes, for the consent, yes.
For the final.
Yes, understood.
Approval. Okay, so any communications to and from the board? We did, and I didn't do my homework again. We did have a technology committee meeting, and I'm looking at Caitlin, and I meant to write down lots of notes to talk about tonight, but we are breaking out into groups to go through each of the goals for, the strategies for the next five years, and then get into some of the more nitty-gritty goals around those. And the committee's doing a lot of great work and discussion on that, so there'll be more for that to come.
I just have two, a couple of small city conversations. So I did hear from Greg Uster that we do believe that next week, I know Suzanne will be happy to hear this, we should be able to get a visit from the snowplows that have all been named by each of our schools. What's the name of the high school snowplow?
Darth Blader?
To say the name of the microphone.
Darth Blader is, yes, and Storm, our mass sweeper, is the middle school. So, and I think, I can't recall the three elementaries, but...
It's like Mr. Snowplow, Plowerson, or something to that.
So Greg Uster, our city manager, shared that with me. Also, many thanks to the Rye PD for supporting us in our multiple distribution events of COVID tests. It's been very helpful. And also, we, Tracy Barnett and I will be over at Rye Rec next week to support the senior groups, teaching them how to use the rapid tests that we've supplied out of our ever-growing supply that keeps coming from the state. We've helped the city out and our senior community, knowing and just talking with Kenny Gianquinto about the inability for the pharmacies to get the tests. We targeted our senior community in supporting them with the availability. So Tracy and I will be visiting with them next week to help them learn how to use these tests. And last, if Kelsey was here, she'd certainly talk about TPS. One of the things that's been in discussion with TPS is parking and the drop-off pickup at Midland School. So I know that there are some, TPS has had some conversations with Jim Boylan about potential improvements, and some requests were sent. So that's in progress, and I'm sure Kelsey will have much more to share in a much more effective way at the next meeting.
Okay, so I believe that brings us to the end of the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Chris Repetto, seconded by Vivek Kamath, all those in favor? Five, nothing. Thank you all for joining us, and we will see you on February 8th for our first budget presentation of the year. So thank you very much, good night.